Do roll call, please.
Yes. Craig Borba?
Here.
Melissa Cronin?
Here.
Juanita Garner?
Here.
David Kelly?
Here.
Ed McBride?
Thank you.
Acceptance of the agenda, please.
The agenda was posted honor before January 27.
Do we have any public comment?
We do not.
May I have a motion to accept the consent agenda, please?
One exception, just if that includes the minutes, I have something I'd like to correct in the minutes.
Okay, so we can take the minutes off for the consent agenda, leaving the library staff. So can I have a motion to accept the amended consent agenda?
I'm so moved.
I'll move. I'll second.
Okay, got that.
Roll call, Jeannie? Or you want me to do it?
You just say, you just say, "Roll call, please."
I can do it.
And then I say, no, and then I say, Craig Borba?
Yes.
Okay, Melissa Cronin?
Yes.
Juanita Garner?
Yes.
David Kelly?
Yes.
Ed McBride?
So trustee Kelly, you would like to discuss the minutes, then?
Yes, I have just one change to it. If I can just pull to the page. In item number 7A, it says that trustee Kelly will be leaving the library board in June of 2021. It's actually should be saying trustee Kelly will be leaving the library board at the end of his term in June 2021. I will be attending the June 2021 meeting.
I approve with that change.
I can make that change.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Director Case, I'm on a roll call.
Okay. Craig Borba?
Yep.
Melissa Cronin?
Yes.
Juanita Garner?
Yes.
David Kelly?
Yes.
Ed McBride?
Thank you. Moving right along, you guys. Someone's got a date tonight. So next item is a report from the Friends, and I assume that's why the illustrious Nancy Morrison is here, since she gave us a report on the Friends. Nancy?
Yes, hi.
Hi.
Well, we don't have too much to report. We had a meeting, as we do every month, and we're moving ahead with we're doing, we're gonna do a silent auction type of deal. We've hired a place that actually handles it for us, and we're gonna do it with our annual meeting. We haven't actually set a date for the annual meeting yet. We normally have it somewhere between mid-March and early May. We're trying to see if we can get some type of author or someone to speak, since obviously we'll be a virtual annual meeting. And so we won't be able to provide food or any, so we're looking for some other enticements to be sure everyone attends. And we're real excited about the library starting to be open. Let's see, we did get notification of we had someone who passed away, and he left us in his will, so we won't be knowing about that for a while. But he is very wealthy, and I know that he had already donated $3 million to a hospital that he used to be associated with. But he has a list of about, oh, I think there was like 50 people that are on his equi-list, so it'll be interesting to see what comes of that. Other than that, that's about all I can think of.
Thank you.
Nancy, what day, or when is your monthly meetings?
It is the second Tuesday of every month at 2:00.
Okay, thank you.
You're gonna be joining us?
I may be joining you in the future.
Yeah, good. Everyone's watching.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Nancy and for the Friends report, anyone? I'll just give you a comment. I paid both of my renewals this week.
Yeah, good, thank you.
You're welcome.
I paid mine today, too.
Proud to. Wonderful. I just got a message from David, and he's unavailable to make it for the foundation, so he just asked me, basically, there's not much to report either from the foundation, other than their end-of-year fundraiser is close to $10,000 that they raised. And they're about to apply for a grant, so they're busily trying to raise money. The, the foundation was working on trying to identify a vendor to help them organize the, the membership, sorry, the donor membership base. They call it a CRM, and I think that they're still working on that, so, but that's, that's about all there is, so I think, to report for the foundation. There any questions for me that I can try to answer? So everybody's raising money, it sounds good. So next, next person is the person who wants to spend it, so Jeannie, talk to us.
That's my favorite thing.
Absolutely.
Actually, I forgot to mention, I forgot to put this in my report, but I'll just say, you know, Lisa, I'll put this in minutes, but the St. Teresa School did a virtual career day this week, and Sean Corbin, the teen librarian, and I both participated. And I gave a presentation to kindergarten through second graders and had a good time with that. I did that last year, too, in person. And that reminds me, because that, that's one of the things I tell them I get to do with, as my career, is buy books, and that's my favorite thing to do, is to buy books. And, and then they said, "Well, what do you do all day?" And I said, "Oh, I do boring stuff. I do, I write reports and all that." And I said, "That's no fun." And then they said, "What do you eat for lunch?" Their inquiring minds wanted to know what I, what I do at lunchtime. So we are, our status is now we are doing curbside again. In contact for pickup, and we're doing that Monday through Saturday. You can pick up your resort, you make reservations, or place requests for items, and pick up items like books and DVDs, and you can request craft kits if you're in the right age group. So children have a tote bag, a tote bag painting kit that they can pick up. And teens are getting ready to be able to pick up Valentines or anti-Valentine's DIY kits. You can also do, pick up, like I said in previous months, you can pick up mobile printing. We do have that feature available, and the free Wi-Fi. And thanks goes to the Friends of the Library for supporting our, our craft kits and our virtual programming. We're, we're putting out content, having fun. I've got one, a video coming out tomorrow. Actually, I've got two videos coming out tomorrow, because we had some staffing issues this week. So I do, am doing Storytime, so you'll, you can see me do Storytime tomorrow at 10:00. And you can also see me demonstrate how to make Hershey's Kisses roses. So that is a craft along. We're not providing craft kits for that, but you can follow along and learn how to make, make little rosebuds out of Hershey's Kisses. Let me show you one real quick.
Jeannie, somebody asked me if you're gonna record that one, because they can't attend.
This one, oh, it's pre-recorded.
Okay, good.
So it's gonna be-
So they'll be able to go in and see it anytime?
Oh, yeah, yeah. So I made, I made these little Hershey's Kisses rosebuds. They're, they're cute, and it's a fun little craft. And so it is recorded, and it's going to be on the YouTube channel, premieres tomorrow afternoon, and then Storytime goes live tomorrow at 10:00, but it, both of those are recorded.
How often do you do Storytime? And how, how often do you do Storytime?
We do Storytime, me?
You.
Me.
Yeah, you.
Maybe once a year.
I didn't think, I thought so. I mean, are you a children's librarian by, by background?
Yeah, yeah. I have my, I have a teacher by background, so I have my, my bachelor's degrees in elementary education with an emphasis in early childhood education. So I love the littles, I love the preschool kids and working with them. And when I first got started, I was a floating librarian in Riverside County, and I worked at all the branches in the desert. So I've worked at every branch in the desert except for Rancho Mirage Library, because they're a separate, independent library. So I was a children's librarian at Palm Desert my first summer, and I've done teen services and just floating around, and I've been the city librarian in three cities now. So, yeah, we do a little bit of everything, but I, that's my, that's my passion. I love kids. I love working with kids and doing the children's stuff. So we did resume our pickup service on January 22nd, and in the month of January, just those, that short period of time, we had 571 appointments. So we were instantly swamped the first two days that we reopened for service. Sorry, Lisa, she was the team that had to, had to work so hard on that one. So we are doing Storytimes on Thursdays at 10:00. Teen live events are on Tuesdays at 4:00 on Instagram. This month's, this month's youth activity is called Cook Along, and our children's librarian is demonstrating delicious Valentine's Day treats using fruit. So she's got some heart-shaped strawberries on fruit kebabs and heart emoji pineapples, just some cute little, little things that you can do. Play with your fruit and have a good time. This video is going to come out on Facebook and YouTube February 9th, so next Tuesday. There will be no craft. You're not gonna get a kit of fruit to pick up on that one, but just get your, get your fruit at home and have fun. We still do have the tote bag kits, like I said. They will be available through February 20th, or while supplies last on that one. Those are intended for children up through grades five, grade five. And the teen kits will be available now through February 13th, and that is for grades six through 12. Let's see, I've got a potential project coming in the future. My Zell Center called me, and we're talking about maybe doing a free virtual author event together. So we'll see if that happens. If it does, I'll send out an email blast and put it out everywhere for everybody to know. So since it's virtual, it's something we can easily, you know, coordinate together and, and work on as a, as a team. And then this is a, maybe a surprise to you, but the city council did approve funding for the hardware upgrade for my book sorting system. And the way that we did this was I evaluated my budget and found that I had some accounts that I didn't spend all my money in, you know, and didn't anticipate needing the money for the rest of the year, like our printing budget or even our events budget. Some of that money, it's, we're just not using it, because we're really trying to save money, and we're not printing brochures like we were. We're just printing black and white copies, just trying to be economical. And so I was able to save the money, and the city council approved the purchase, so we're gonna work-
Yay.
Move ahead for that, to get that taken care of, so that we, the hard, the new computers installed in that system. So that is my report, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Jeannie, what's the timeline for the installation of that? I know you were anxious to kind of get it installed before everybody comes back in.
Well, that was a tricky one, because the company is in Germany, and so there are travel restrictions right now. So to get them to come here, I'm worried that there will be a delay on that one. But we're just taking it one step at a time, because it's like, let's just get the funding approved, let's get the project approved, let's get the equipment ordered. And then hopefully, we'll be at the state. I, I just really don't know. It's, it's tough to say, because now, now would be the perfect time to get that done. But also, there, you know, people can't travel, and it's not safe, so we're, we're understanding of that. I really don't know.
Any other questions?
Money saved and set aside for it.
Yes, actually, I went to ask about our new city manager, Justin Clifton, and whether or not city staff like yourself are going to get a chance to meet him shortly, or have you met with him already?
We have not. We just got the, the press information like you did, or as the community did. And the new city manager is coming from Sedona, Arizona. He starts April 5th, and I, I, I'm not sure how the transition will go. I'm, I'm sure they'll, they'll meet with us or, or do some sort of virtual meet and greet or something, so. Yeah, nothing's been announced to us yet. They, they just extended the contract and started the negotiation, I think. I, well, they hired him, so.
I'd love it if you'd send him a note somehow to say, "We'd love to see you visit us at the Board of Trustees."
Yeah, I'm not su, yeah, I could do that, certainly. I'm not sure how his current job obligations are.
He seemed very friendly. I sent him a message congratulating him on Facebook, and he wrote back to me, so.
That's good. Making a note.
Is Dr. Ready now gone?
No, he's still here until April. So he'll help with the transition and make sure that we have a city manager in place until, until the new one comes aboard.
Any other questions for Jeannie?
I have none.
All right, thank you, Jeannie, as always.
Thank you.
The treasurer's report from our treasurer.
Hi, thanks. Jeannie, we're gonna have to go to the screen. I think we're on page nine on the report. On the-
Just a moment, let me get that. Okay, can you see that?
Nine, yes. Okay, so according to this report, we have cash balances of $1,817,857.60. Oddly enough, that's an increase from last month, but I can't explain, about $1,000. So maybe, Jeannie, you can help me out on this, but we can go along a little further if you go to the next page. I did not see any changes in this page. As you recall from last meeting, they made an adjustment to our interest. It was way overboard on the $16,374.96, so they adjusted it down by about $8,000 and changed. That's not anything new. So if we can go to the next page.
I know where your money is. I know what the, what the amount is. We, we got a donation for $1,000, and we got a donation for $25.
Ah, okay.
And it finally, it finally hit your account.
Okay, so, and I think you actually showed us a donation for $1,000 in last month's package, didn't you, I think?
Yeah, it was a donation at the end of December, but it took, these are the January financials.
Yeah.
So that's where it, that's why it finally showed up on your account.
Okay, I'm always happy when the numbers grow bigger, but the other thing that's here on this page that I can't explain either is we had an issue last year with expenditures that were coming out for the Friends of the Library that needed to be fixed, and it seems like it's popping up again. I don't know why.
Oh, this $176.25? That is just, that's their proceeds that they made in November, I believe, November or December. So it, it'll, it'll switch out and go the other direction, so it'll, it'll even out.
I'm sure it will, but I think, I thought it was an issue that we were actually, that we actually corrected, so it didn't have to be that way. From my recollection, it was, there was a system that was being set up where monies that were being taken in by the Friends were being given to us, and then we were giving them a check or something like that, and it didn't make any sense as to why were the trustees getting money from the Friends. I, you know, I can't.
The finance department uses, the finance department uses your account as a conduit to transfer that money through. So I put, when I sent it to them, I said, "Do this one first, and this one second," and then it's possible that they didn't do it that way, because two different people do the tran- one person does the, the transfer of the money in, and one person cuts the check, so it's possible that they didn't do it in the order I asked them to do it.
Okay, but, so, correct me if I'm wrong, but was it that we had decided that this system was not gonna be in place any longer? Or are we saying that we're going back to doing it this way, and we're gonna have to keep, be mindful of these changes? I didn't understand, and I don't know if we, to the satisfaction of the trustees, were explained as to why this would have to continue.
This was the way that we were told to do it from the finance department. They switched the rules reas, I mean, recently, within like the last year or two, and said, "You have to transfer the money through." They can't, they were, what they were doing is they were cutting it straight from a revenue account, and they're not allowed to do that. So they are using this account as they were supposed to be doing, as the transfer, the conduit, like I said, to the place where the money goes in, and then it comes, jumps right back out.
So if, for example, if this board of trustees ever decides to move it, all of its funding to an independent source, how is the library gonna continue to do this?
I'm sure that the city would set up, take this account number and just leave it here with, because it's not, they would just leave the line item and leave an account number for the Friends.
Okay, well, I'm not the only one who's gonna be sitting here at six months from now, having to live with it. So if somebody else wants to pipe up about their satisfaction with this issue, that's fine with me. Otherwise, it's gonna stay this way.
Didn't we discuss this last month?
No, we didn't come up last month. But we have in last year.
Right, we discussed it.
There was, it was an issue where it occurred to me after a couple of months of looking at this report, that there was some issue that we hadn't been properly credited back for this money.
And it's been in place for quite some time, correct? Jeannie, I think you, you shared with us why we have this. It's when people purchase something from the Friends or like, in the library, that's where it's coming from?
Right, when something's, when somebody buys something from the Friends book sale, we accept the money, and it goes to the city and with a special department code keyed on the, the cash register, so we know that it's Friends. And then that money, we do a form that says, "Take that money and put it into this account, your account." And then, then we do another form that says, "Please cut a check to the Friends for the exact same amount," so that the money just passes there. It's past their account.
And I think we've talked about this many years. Why isn't there an issue of what can there be just a, a cash box there at the desk where the cash goes in and the Friends pick it up?
Because we wouldn't have a good audit process of that, and there's a possibility, risk of theft.
Okay.
Or, yeah, the, well, the other thing is, this is the way it's always been done, one of those things. But the money is stored in our cash register, and it's secured, and it's balanced, and it's audited from the finance department.
And we raised this issue before with flying her. Right?
The, there have been some staffing changes, and I think that just recently, they've been, I don't, you know, like, everybody really short-staffed and working on staffing, and so I'll, I just have to look into that to see. It should have, the money should have gone in. I mean, it, it looks like, it looks like the money went in, and then it came right back out, and your balance is $100. Is that? The budget got increased to $276, then the $176 came out, and leaving the hu, the original $100. So it looks like it did what it was supposed to do. I haven't run a full audit of that account.
I've never quite understood why we would have an available balance or a budget in there. Are, is it timing? This is the, is this the timing issue? Because if you take in $276.25, that's a really odd number. Wouldn't it go right back out?
They, the Friends took, the Friends earned $176.25, and we keep $100 in that account every year as a placeholder to keep the account open.
I mean, I would be interested to know if the city could just pull that line item out or open a separate account that's not under the auspices of the trust account, because kind of, I think, what trustee Kelly is hinting at, like, it seems like it introduces some unnecessary confusion. You know, not having been here in the past year, I can see where that would just create extra work for whoever the treasurer is on our end.
Well, if anything, it's just more of an irritation, because it's such a small amount of money, and it comes in and out, and it, I think, in my opinion, it's just something where the city said, "It's just put it there," you know, without thinking that, could it go somewhere else? Why they picked the trust fund to show that just a small amount of money coming in and out?
You know, I mean, especially when there's a whole nother page, I think, that has city expenditures that we have no control over. And they could, they could put a line item for it there.
No, this is a, this is a special fund. My, the reports that you get are, are custom-picked reports for you. I show you my expenditures, because you're the trustees, and it's good for you to see what I'm spending my general fund money on. Because my budget is a general fund budget, that money comes from the city. So the Friends revenue, the Friends income is not, it would, it would, you can't confuse those two funds now.
I mean, because the other part of it is, I mean, it sounded like you were saying earlier, too, about this benefit of having an audit. And I don't know to whose benefit that accrues to, but it certainly is not something, I think, as a trustee, I'm interested in having the Friends of the Palm Springs Library money audited, and-
Well, I don't want employee theft. It's audited from the employees to make sure that we are not stealing. That's the kind of audit that we're doing.
Oh.
Yeah, it's so, to protect my employees, to make sure that the city knows that we are not doing anything untoward, because we are dealing with public funds, and to make sure that we're not, we're not stealing, and that we are doing our accounting properly. And so I think this, the city does this as a courtesy to, to take in the Friends revenue for us in this manner. It saves us from having to have two cash registers and two, two pots of money and two, all of those processes. And I, and I, this has been going on before I got here, so I'm assuming that's probably the way the city wanted us to handle money.
I, I'm guessing it was probably, because of the fact that those city expenditure accounts are not easily manipulated, that it was probably easier for your predecessor to just set it up in the trust, and in that we've just been accommodating that since.
No, it wouldn't be the, my, the library director. It's the finance department. The finance department would, would have set this up. Did, can you see my screen on the Friends?
I have a question, something you just said. I wanna make sure I understand what I just heard. This, this report we're looking at, I can see up at the top up there, the selection criteria calls for this account to be included in this report. What happens if we take that out of this report? We just don't see it? I mean, it just, it happens in the background without us knowing about it? Is that what happens?
No, no, these are all of your designated expenditure accounts. These, the 42195 and the 42530, and the five zeros and five ones. So, no, this, this is, is an expenditure status report of all of your accounts. So, and as an example, this-
Library endowment, which is 151, correct?
Yeah, 151. So on page 10, this is an example of a, a custom-generated report for one- Yeah, 151. So on page 10, this is an example of a, a custom-generated report for one specific.
Account.
I, account, yeah. This is a revenue audit. So this is a detailed account of your revenue or interest income. And then, I don't think we have any other specific audit accounts. But I, I wanted to show you this, that, and you can see this, right? The Friends detail here on the screen, if you can, where it shows that $176.25 went into the account. And then, and then on the 16th and then on the 23rd. So you got the money deposited in on the 16th. So it did work the way it was supposed to. So on the 16th, a deposit came in and then on the 23rd.
Went out.
Issued the check. So you had the money for seven days in your. Now, these, this amount is a low amount because we were only open for a few days during that time. Usually this is like a $1,600 transfer.
So probably what you're saying is that if I had a record of the donation and knowing that $176 went out, but then looking at this page, it came back in, or maybe the reverse.
Or the reverse.
Then, then I would be able to reconcile the accounts. Is that what you're saying?
Yeah, yeah, you can see the.
Because then I can make, I can make two recommendations then. One recommendation I would make is to make this page available on every single month. So that there's, I don't have a question as to where, you know, I can look at it and see what's going on. But the second request I would make is that we should actually have a line item that shows when donations come in. Because I don't see it, you know, I, it's kind of like, I don't see it anywhere. So I only know it because of the, the total cash balances. And if we can add and if we can, you know, do the same kind of thing that you did with the Friends, the Palm Springs Library, to create an account with a hundred dollars, a hundred dollars in it. And then whenever somebody donates money to it, it increases. That, that would be helpful. I don't know how to manipulate these or how to, to set up these accounts. But I think that would be one other level of detail that would be useful.
The complication with that is that that is a revenue audit for the library and we get, these are donations every day. If we're open and operating, this would, this would be pages and pages of our daily cash register transactions. And, and you would see 25 cents and you would see 50 cents and $2 and, and all of these things. And so it's, it would be cumbersome to, 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 to report that at that level. I mean.
Let me ask it this way, because this, I agree, this page here would be cumbersome, right? But this page that you're showing here boils down to one line item on the prior page that we were looking at. The one that I was questioning to begin with. So I, if we had that one line and you had all this other boilerplate stuff behind it somewhere else, it doesn't need to get printed. Couldn't that be a solution?
I'm, I'm kind of confused. I'm not really sure.
So I understand your thing about the 50 cents and the dollar and those kind of donations. And that, that probably would end up being, looking like, very much like the screen that you have here where there's like something that happened on the 6th and then something that happens on the 23rd and then something that happened, you know, on different dates of the year. So that's the kind of detail that probably, you know, maybe if I need to look for a needle in a haystack, I would ask for. But all this information you're showing on the screen right now boils down to one row in the prior report, which is the one that showed that it was $176.25 expenditure. So what I'm asking is, let's do the reverse. Take that information about all of those pennies and nickels and dimes that get set in as donations and then have it reported on a one-line item as a revenue item.
I think when Jeannie was talking about the nickels and quarters, I think she was talking about the book sales, not donations, right? I think you were talking about two different things.
Yeah, that's what this is. This is book sale revenue.
The one on the screen is a book sales. I think she was referring to the donations.
No, this $176.25 is book sale revenue.
Right, but the, the 50 cents and the dollar that you were referring to, you were talking about daily donations.
No, I'm talking about people buying a book for a quarter. And a quarter and we enter in our cash register for 25 cents. And then it accumulates and adds up and it becomes $176.25. So that's, that's why, this is a, so this transaction on December 6th is a transfer that we request, we run a report for the, the fund where the, the, the daily book sales go to. And then we run a report and it says, you earned $176.25. And so then we fill out a form that says, please transfer 176.25 into the trust fund. And then we fill out another form that says, please issue a check to Friends. And these are, so it's a, it starts out in a, a revenue account where the money, all the money lands and accumulates. And then we say, transfer to the trust fund where we can then spend it and then it gets transferred as a check. So.
Basically, Jeannie, what, every year there's a hundred dollars budgeted in here. And once a month, you do that process. It doesn't like you're doing it every day when you collect money, correct?
No, it's a once a month report and once a month process.
That's what we're looking at here.
And this year, we just didn't have any because we weren't open.
Correct. However, I do like the idea, where, where would we see the thousand dollars that's coming to us? Where, where is the donations to the trust fund? Is there a report like this that shows that?
Yeah, let me see. Just a moment. See if I can run it. Just a moment. There, I just don't know where. I don't know how to run, I don't know how to, I don't know what report it is.
Well, let's see if we can get it together for next month then.
Yeah, I can do that.
I'm sorry, you said that you could.
Do you want?
You can do what for next month? You can add the, the contributions to the trust fund as well? Is that what you're saying?
I think so. I can definite, actually, it ended up in 50004, so.
You're doing this report live? Is that what you're doing?
Yeah. I'll have to, I'll have to look and see.
Yeah, because I think it would be useful to find if, not just the, you know, the, the report like you printed out for the, the Crispier Funds, but to have something, if there's a page that kind of looks like the one that you're presenting here where it just shows up as a line item. And if, you know, and if there's no comparable line item for the next month's report, maybe go back to, I guess, the January report when, where the, the thousand dollars was credited.
Right here.
Here we go.
There.
I found it. So this is the 10,000 from the foundation, notes receivable, and then the one, 125, a hundred dollar donation too.
So then, from what you've given us, there's no report that we currently see that has 37105 contributing non-government sources.
Right.
So that would be, I don't need the detail necessarily, but maybe if there was a report that we would see on a monthly basis that shows the 37105, that would be really helpful.
Okay.
So that way we can account for income as well as expenditures on a monthly basis. And it looks like, well, I don't know what it's going to look like, but it, it kind of looks like the, it's a similar report to the interest one that we got.
It's exactly the same style of report. It's a revenue audit. And so, yes, it's the.
Yeah, I mean, it might just turn out to be, since you're already giving us the interest report, maybe that report would be something to just add on as opposed to finding it somewhere else.
Okay. Yeah, it looks like they haven't finished my, or I don't know if they finished the transfers or not either. I'm looking at those numbers. So I'll look into that too. So did you say you wanted the, the Friends detail report like I showed you? I don't think I have it loaded anymore. I think I closed it, but.
That's okay. No, I'm just going to, no, my preference is I wouldn't want to see this at all. But, you know, it, it's just giving me something else I have to pay attention to on a month-to-month basis. That's all.
Okay. The, the bottom line on that Friends line is that you want to make sure that the available balance at the end is a hundred dollars. The money went in and the money went out equally.
That's what we must do.
Any, any further discussion, trustee Kelly, on this?
No, I'm good. Thanks.
Any questions on this month's treasures report?
No, I'm good. Thank you.
Thank you, as always. Hey, next on our agenda, please, Eugene, you need to talk to us. I'm sorry, guys. Talk to us about.
The Croppitzer. Okay. I'll share my screen again. Okay. So this report is in your packet. We did receive a, a large donation from the estate of Harold and Lorraine Croppitzer. The gift, they, it came in, in, in portions as they closed out the estate. And the grand total that we received is $256,665.74. The bequest has a, a specific clause in it. It says that Palm Springs Public Library Trust Fund, that this is who they're giving it to, to be used by the Palm Springs Public Library for the construction or setting aside of a quiet reading center for senior patrons in the main library, or if this is not feasible, for the purchase of nonfiction adult books written in English. And since this started in 2015, that was six years ago, we have spent $45,000 of that money for nonfiction books in English. And then on my, in the packet, I included actual, I, I advised history of the account every year. And so what we would do is transfer the $10,000 or $5,000, as it were, into the account called Trust Fund Books, which is on page 11. And then we spend out of that account instead of the Croppitzer account.
And why is it done that way, Jeannie? I'm just curious.
It's just easier for us to reconcile on our end with, if the trustees designated other funds for books, we just spent all from that same account rather than having to wonder if it was from the 51026 or the 51031 account. It's easier for us when we're paying the bills to just pay it out of one, one account.
Jeannie, is this money receiving interest?
It's part of your trust fund, so yes.
Okay, so that money just rolls into the rest of the trust fund. Okay?
Yeah. It's just a separate called-out line item because of the clause that they set on the donation.
Yeah.
Well, first of all, I want to say thank you for providing this. It brings some clarity as to what's been going on with the Croppitzer Trust Fund. It also raises some issues, obviously, because, you know, I don't know if there's been a discussion since, since I've been on the Board of Trustees about the amount that's being spent out of the, out of this trust. I certainly don't know the origins of the decision to make 10,000 or $5,000 draws out of it. And what do we want to do with it? You know, what percentage of the actual amount of money that's being used of this fund? It's actually, you know, how much of the, the purchase of nonfiction adult books is being used by this fund? So a number of questions come out of this. And I guess whenever we do have a budget discussion, obviously, this is something to consider as part of it. So I do appreciate the presentation. It gives us some more information.
Well, traditionally, I mean, I remember when this, this came to us, Jeannie. I mean, you've requested $10,000 to be transferred to Trust Fund Book Account. And then you spent $10,000 on, on nonfiction books, correct?
Right.
Along with your regular budget. Is that right?
Right, it really helps supplement our nonfiction collection because it is a popular collection and we're known for having a, a good, deep content here at Palm Springs.
And also, the one thing about this is the restriction being for nonfiction adult books written in English. It's, I mean, it could be narrower. I mean, they could have said for seniors, right? I mean, they could have gone further, but at least it, it allows you to spend it for anything in the nonfiction collection as long as it's in English, pretty much, right?
Right.
In the past, what, do you recall, is there, have you ever used these funds to like do a catch-up to the collection development plan? Or have you ever used the money to, you know, buy a collection of something that you wanted for that year? Or talk to us a little bit about how you made that decision to put that money and where, where it goes? Or does it go into your regular book budget and you just spend it?
We, we have a librarian that's dedicated to purchasing nonfiction and it kind of goes, just goes into the nonfiction overall budget. Now, I will say that the librarians are, are so grateful for the donations by the Friends and the trustees. And what they tend to do is they'll spend their, their city money first and they'll use this money when we get to the end of the year. And because another thing that we have to do at the end of our fiscal year, it's kind of, there's so many as- aspects of this. When we get towards the end of the fiscal year, we have to stop ordering books for the end so that we have time for the books to come in and the invoices to come in and for us to finish the year. So April and May, we're really slowing down in ordering. And so that's when our librarians pick up that Friends money and they really start spending in the summer to get us through the, the fiscal year conversion. Because at the end of June, they say, stop spending. And the beginning of July, sometimes the money's not ready. And the beginning of July, sometimes the money's not ready. So we use that for carryover. And I know our librarian who does the nonfiction, I know she uses a lot of this bonus money, if you will, to help buy replacement copies or or really fill in gaps of areas where she sees that we can't just use our regular money. Now, this year, our budget from the city was cut in half. So imagine, if you will, imagine your household budget was cut in half and then you're like, well, where am I going to get the money? Well, this has really helped us out. This helps carry us along. And and so it just gives us the opportunity to buy more content and develop to develop a more robust collection. So we, you know, we can have our basic collection and just get the basics that we need. But this helps us get even more content. So I know, and help us buy some of those more expensive books. It costs a thousand dollars. So we've even cut back on buying an encyclopedia. We used to buy two encyclopedias, one for children and one for adults. And now I think we buy one every other year because it's a thousand dollars for an encyclopedia.
Two observations. I mean, what you just described is a practice done by every public library in the country. So you're not doing anything that's unique to Palm Springs. I mean, everybody has the same process. I got you on that. I guess my other point, and I meant to say this while to go, is that, is this print only or can this be used for other media? Is it strictly print?
We have strictly been using it for print. It's not, there could be the caveat that eBooks might count. Not sure, but we, we took to say books. We could, we can use this money for books. And if we need to buy eBooks with our other money, we could, we could do that. So this has been hard books.
And Jeanie, I remember we talked about this when we were discussing the five thousand dollar draw back in November. So forgive me if that I'm not totally clear on the details. But is it your belief and kind of understanding that doing this sort of senior reading space in the current footprint of the library is not feasible for the immediate future?
Well, as is with the library now.
Yeah.
It's not feasible. We don't have any. I don't, I don't see this. I don't see, I don't know. I just don't see it in the current footprint. Maybe I think in a few, if we had a renovation, we could do that. My reason for asking for ten thousand dollars was, I thought that if we, let's say that we never got a reading, a quiet space for seniors. If we had this money, it's two hundred fifty six thousand. If we did ten thousand a year, that's twenty five years. So that donation would last us twenty five years at the, you know, just flat rate, whatever that is, basically. So that's a long-term gift, which would benefit us. You know, either way, it would benefit us. But if we got, if we got a new library and we could have like a quiet reading room or a quiet study room, I think a quiet study room might might count. And it's hard to say, well, it's only for seniors. I mean, that's kind of tricky.
I think, full disclosure, guys, in previous boards, when this has come up, especially after we got this this request, Jeanie always had challenges trying to get her her full budget request anyway. So we saw this as an opportunity to use something in the trust fund to at least give her some money to keep the collection going. By the way, ten thousand dollars in some years really was a drop in the bucket when the budget was cut because the book budget had some pretty steep cuts in the past. But through discussions like this, we felt, okay, we'll take ten thousand dollars this year because library collections, even even like this year, we've been closed, you still have to buy books because the collection, if it ever has a hole in it from not buying, you never recover from that. I mean, it's just so hard to go out and get those current works to put into the collection. So I think ten thousand was a number that we looked to her. I'm not speaking like you're not you are, Jeanie. And yeah, I think you came up with, you know, if we can have ten thousand dollars this year, it would at least help us when the money runs out from our regular budget to at least continue buying some things for this until the budget comes back in for the next year. I think that's coming back to me as part of our discussion. Am I, am I recollecting correctly here? I think I am, right?
Yeah, that's right. And then if it was, honestly, if it was more than ten thousand, then we spend, well, not this year, but normally, we would, that would be too many books. And what do you do with all those books, like literally a thousand books? Or however many physical books. So then we have to figure out how, what do we get rid of? And what do we, yeah.
Question, Jeanie, and I, and I hope you, I know you'll give me an honest reaction here, is that with the half of the, giving five thousand this past year, you know, what was that impact to the book budget process for you this year? And if we were to say, let's, let's hold on to this in future years and not give you an allocation every year, what would that do to your book budget? I mean, what, what do you think about that?
Okay, so if we, the five thousand dollars this year particularly was very helpful. It would have been, obviously, even more helpful if it was ten thousand because our book budget got cut in half. So that was harsh. It's, our budget's just a mess. The Friends really stepped up and helped us. So thank God for the Friends, too, to help us with our book budget and and the trustees helping us, too. So I'm not ungrateful for the money, but but this year would have been, it would have really helped us to have the full ten thousand. Now, overall, with our full book budget, what was the second part of this question?
You're answering it. Let me, let me jump in there and say though, I think that, of course, when this five thousand dollars was approved, no one had any idea that we'd be going into a pandemic and everything would spiral down, right?
That's not correct.
Was it during the, did we know at the time where we closed? Because I wasn't at that meeting. I, that was the one meeting I missed. I can't recall.
I don't think that we knew it would go this long or continue beyond even now, but
Yeah, actually, I'd like to actually interject at this point because this actually, it's kind of surprising to me. But, you know, when I saw this report and I saw the five thousand dollars, I was kind of like saying, why, why was it only five thousand and not ten thousand? And so I went back to the minutes for the October meeting when we were discussing, Jeanie had reported that the library, I'm reading from the minutes, the library operational budget was decreased by thirty seven percent. The library is asking the trustees for seventy seven thousand to help supplement the budget, fifty thousand for books and DVDs, and twenty seven thousand to upgrade the hardware on the automated materials handling unit. We had a motion to approve twenty thousand dollars for CD DVDs. And then we had another motion that that one didn't, that was amended to actually to do twenty thousand for DVDs and five thousand for adult nonfiction. Now, you know, it didn't occur to me at the time when we were approving the twenty thousand dollars for the DVDs and five thousand for adult nonfiction, that the five thousand dollars, I knew the five thousand dollars was going to come out of the trust, but I didn't know it was coming out of the Croppetzer Trust donation. So, you know, and that's, and correct me if I'm wrong, but I think that's exactly what happened because you can see on this report that it was done in November twenty four, twenty twenty, which followed that October meeting. So unless there was five thousand dollars, it's expended from somewhere else. So I guess if it was presented to the trustees at the time in October that, you know, in the past, we had been using ten thousand dollars that came from the Croppetzer Trust donation for nonfiction books, we probably would have just gone ahead and said, oh, fine, just keep it at ten thousand dollars. But, you know, that's why it's so surprising to me to see this report here. So I think going forward, when we're thinking about, again, this goes back to my, the implications of this report for the budget, when we start thinking about the next budget, that, you know, if we're going to allocate a certain amount of money for adult nonfiction, and we know that there's a Croppetzer Trust that specifically addresses that issue, I think we should just go to that issue first and then, you know, and then deal with the, whether or not there's, you know, fifty thousand dollars needed for books and how we're, how we're funding them.
David, I had the same perception that you have just voiced regarding that five thousand dollars. I did not know what was going to come out of this. I thought it was going to come out of our trust. So I probably would have been more inclined to spend more money if I knew where it was coming out of.
Actually, I remember bringing it up and saying, if this money is already allocated for adult books, then why, what's the problem? Since it's already allocated for that, I do remember that being part of our meeting. I don't remember the the fund being named, being, you know, given, you know, told the name of the fund. But I do remember Jeanie telling us this money has already been allocated for this. And I remember saying, if it's already allocated, why can't we just give it to to her? And then we got down to, why don't we give her half? But I, but it was part of our conversation.
Yeah, I remember it that way also. And I do believe the specific name of the trust was mentioned. But I think from my perspective, I definitely didn't understand the context like trustee Kelly was saying that we had given exactly ten thousand dollars every year for a certain number of years. And when we were talking about the ten thousand dollar allocation, certainly my thinking at the time, I remember talking about, you know, questions around the volume of new published nonfiction books in a pandemic year, whether it needed to be ten or we could do five. And I certainly was following that line of thinking without knowing that there's a history of it. So to trustee Kelly's point, with the budget discussions, this kind of historical data is very helpful.
So with knowing all of this, do we want to go back and allocate another five thousand out of this separate trust fund that's within our trust fund?
Or we can make it up in the next budget?
I, I think that, to answer that question from my perspective, would be, I would like to hear from Jeanie that if at the end of her cycle this year, when she, what she, as she just described, happens every year, if there are some priorities on the selection list that need to be acquired for this year's collection development plan, she can bring it back to us and surface and see if we need to give her some more money so that there's not a lost opportunity for buying materials that will not be available in the next budget cycle, which can happen. I think that, as I've said to her in the past, I say to all of you, she can come to us with a request anytime. So I think that if she gets to the end of the site and she's, oh, gosh, guys, there's, there's several collections that we just have run out of money, and if we miss this opportunity to buy them, the impact of the collection is this, and explains that to us, we could consider it. And definitely, if we need to make it up in next year, we could do that as well. I think considering the fact that the budget was hit so hard this year, that that's my fear. There are some things that are on the wish list that may not be purchased when we have the money sitting here that could help her purchase those items.
But I think the other side of it, too, is that, and I don't know how to form this into a motion, but I would probably say that we should just consider on an annual basis that there's going to be a minimum ten thousand dollar donation to the, from the Croppetzer Trust donation to go to towards nonfiction books and leave it at that. And because, I mean, I don't see any reason why, you know, the judgment that was made, you know, back when this donation was made to at least expend ten thousand dollars a year from it shouldn't continue.
Chairman, can we put this on as a motion item for our next board meeting?
Certainly. I, I agree, Jeanie. I think explaining this with the understanding of how you guys use these funds, it's unfortunate we didn't have that when the request was coming forward. So I, I think this has been very helpful for us now to understand how this money is used and what it's for.
And just one more.
Yes.
Oh, sorry. I don't know if that this is necessarily my place, but just a thought to raise potentially. I understand that the funds are mixed, but is there ever the potential to include a plaque on the inside of the cover if you were going to do the encyclopedia or something like that? Just so there's some recognition historically of this contribution, seeing as how having an actual reading room, you know, leaves more of like a legacy mark on it? And it would be nice to have some kind of recognition in the books that way.
We actually do that.
Oh, good. Okay.
We put it, we put book plates, yeah. It's done. We put book plates in everything that is paid for by the trust fund and everything that is paid for by the Friends because, because it's wonderful to see that when, and if there's something, if somebody specifically makes a donation for a collection, if we have a Friends member pass away and people make donations for for travel books or whatever it might be, we put that in memory of that specific person. So people can make donations to us, too, in memory or in honor of of someone. And then we will buy books and put book plates donation.
I guess I need to take out more adult nonfiction, so I'll see this.
And I don't, I don't mean this to be preachy. It's just something that, you know, Jeanie and I have lived all of our lives. I mean, most libraries operate this way. They have the, the funds they get from the city goes to most of the collection. And they always say those, we would love to have these for the collection list for money that comes from sources like this and from the Friends and from the foundation. And I think that that's, that's how this has always been traditionally used. And it's nice to be reminded because, you know, there is a list of, every librarian, I promise you, has a list, oh, if I had the money, I would love to add this to the collection. And sometimes it can be as simple as a children's series or something that's just really hot right now, but in the future needs to be in the collection. So I think that's really helpful to be reminded of that. Correct? Am I, am I representing that correctly?
Right. And I wanted to to bring out some, too, in the past, the trustees had voted to approve their interest income as money that they would dedicate to purchase books. So this is, this was a lot, somewhere between twenty twelve and twenty fifteen or so, the trustees had devoted that money. And that kind of, we kind of stopped that process. But that was kind of a nice way to, to not make a big impact into the trust fund, but just to take the earnings and buy the, and spend that on books. But
It could be simply because we were called upon to put a roof on the building, right? I mean, we were
That was before me. That was, that was
Asking you to defend, but I think that the sentiment of a lot of the trustees before was, yeah, that's very nice for us to give that. But when the city started looking at us to pay for things that we felt were their responsibility, I think there was, and I'm not saying it was me because I wasn't there either. I'm just telling you from what was shared with me from previous people. It was like, okay, well, we better watch this money. It's going to be gone because we're going to be putting roofs and repairing bathrooms if we're not careful. So I think there's a full discussion and disclosure here, right, of just that, so.
I would also feel a little uncomfortable making that commitment, given the fact that, unless, of course, we ever get to the point where we're actually putting this money outside of the city, when the city can actually credit us for sixteen thousand dollars in interest in the next month, take half of it back. So
Good point. There's a point. Are there any other questions or comments for Jeanie on on this report? Thank you, Jeanie. Anything else from anyone? Jeanie, before we move on, you and I had talked about inserting on the agenda the discussion that you had regarding our committee structure. And did that, did you not put that on here or?
It's an item. Your paper is hitting your microphone and it's
I'm sorry.
causing distortion. The Causing distortion. Um, the item is, uh, 7D like David.
My, mine only has 7C. All right.
Mine has D.
I have B.
Okay, I don't have D. I only have C.
Thank you. I'm not the only one going crazy here. No, I only have.
Okay. So I apologize. It's like, uh, two of you got error.
That's okay. So 7D is, read this what, please? Can you, can you share that with me?
It literally says committee structure McBride.
Okay.
And then, um, do you, did you get the bylaws?
I have the bylaws, but I, no, I didn't get the bylaws.
My gosh, I'm sorry. I did email the packets to you all.
Yes.
Sorry about that.
Yeah, I just used the paper copy that you sent. But I, I did look at the online version again. I just didn't notice there was 7Ds. That's my, my fault.
So do you want to, um, stick with 7B like boy and then go back to that?
Well, if, if it's okay, I, I, I would like to talk about 7D before we do 7C. I, I would have asked for the change of the agenda when we got started, but, because I think it will have some impact on our discussion around 7B. That's why.
Oh, B like, uh, B like boy. Okay.
Yeah, the, uh, the report from trustee Kelly, I think that if we talk about this committee structure, it, it might have a little bit of the impact on what we do with, with 7B. So maybe we talk about that. This, it's a very short conversation, I believe.
That's up to the trustees.
Yeah, that's, I'm fine.
Any objections? Anyone object? If you do, please let us know. Okay. So Jeannie, can you, can you bring everyone up to speed on the conversation you had with me a, about the committee structure and, um, the, pretty much the guidelines we got on how we need to move forward with, with how we use this committee structure? And the, um, just the requirements we have going forward?
Yes, let me pull up my. So, um, I did have some further conversations with the city clerk about the term, the language of the, the standing subcommittee versus, um, an ad hoc subcommittee. And, um, he sent me an excerpt of the Brown Act regarding standing committees. And it's not just the name standing committee, it's the method in which the committee is formed. And so, uh, in the Brown Act, it says, irrespective of their composition, uh, standing committees of a legislative body, irrespective of their composition, will have either, one, a continuing subject matter jurisdiction, or two, a meeting scheduled fixed by charter ordinance resolution or formal action of a legislative body. Even if it comprises less than a quorum of the governing body, a standing committee is subject to the Brown Act. So, um, he was saying that since, um, if you make, if, if you all assign people and make, basically take formal action to develop this committee, it is by definition a standing committee. Now, if people, um, just volunteered and there was no, uh, no action taken to designate that, then that would be more of an ad hoc, uh, method. So, uh, you can, you, your bylaws, uh, if you wanted to make, um, the budget group, uh, ad hoc group, you would need to make a change to your bylaws and, uh, which can certainly be done. And then that could be just a, as needed and not formal.
So, so basically, Jeannie, and I, I thought we, we discussed this. Correct me if I, if I did not hear this correctly. But in our bylaws, the committees that we had, we formed at our annual meeting last month and we assigned folks to, they, they're in our bylaws. We have assignments to those. Um, they are now subject to the Brown Act, which means that when we meet, we must post, they must be public meetings, invite the public for comments, correct? Whether it's a quorum or not, if we have anything that goes before that, those committees. And, um, I, we could change them if we wanted to, but basically we've all agreed that these are our committees. And these are the ones we have in place now.
Drop for a moment.
I'm sorry?
I, I just, I, I'm afraid we're about to go down a rabbit hole really quickly. So before we do that, I just want to just, um, make a, a point. One is that, um, I think we already acknowledged that, uh, point, uh, number 7D wasn't on our agenda. Um, and now that we're going further into this 7D item, um, and, uh, with, with number one, not presenting the, a memo from the city, regarding this, um, this issue of, uh, the Brown Act and not presenting in our packet, the relevant parts of the Brown Act in it. Um, I'm not comfortable in having this discussion at this time. So I think probably what we need to do is to, um, you know, I understand that, uh, the president, McBride and our, uh, library director have had a conversation. I think it needs to be, um, uh, put into a memo formalized, uh, so that it's a presentation to the board of trustees as to what the issues are and what the trustees are being asked to consider. And if we need to, at that point, uh, make amendments to, um, our, um, our bylaws, then we can consider it at that time. But I think the rabbit hole that we're about to go down is, is one where we're making a lot of discussions without context and, uh, without having a presentation that we, we could have actually reviewed in advance. And I'm saying that also in consideration of the fact that we have two new board members here, two new board of trustees members who are probably not so familiar with, uh, these, uh, these ins and outs that maybe some of us are.
So trustee Kelly, I'm, I'm, I'm actually, I, I'm staying away from making any modification to the bylaws. The reason that I, I wanted this discussed is because I think in the report that you're about to present, that, which is a, a wonderful report, by the way, that we're going to have to take that to our finance committee under this new process and make it a public discussion. So that's really why I wanted Jeannie to bring this to us. So.
I really don't think that, I disagree. I don't think that there's anything in my report that requires a discussion about how our committee structure is, is done. It may, may actually, um, present some issues for a committee to discuss later, but I don't think it, I don't think, uh, we need to finalize what a finance committee can do or not do before we, we hear that report. And I feel better that if we're, if you were actually saying that these committees have Brown Act issues, I'd like to see it presented in a way that the public understands. And right now, nothing is being presented to the public.
Okay. So Jeannie, let's put this on the agenda for next month's meeting. And let's capture the conversation and the instruction that you received so that we can discuss that.
Okay.
And, I mean, is it worth inviting someone to come and talk to us about that?
Possible. Um, if you want to, I can invite the clerk.
Yeah. I think just, I, I don't think it would hurt to have a conversation.
I think it would be better though, if whatever the clerk is going to, uh, attest to is actually put in writing somewhere in advance so that we have a record of it. Because I think if, no, if.
No disagreement.
Yeah, I, I, I just think it would help us going forward as a, a body to have in the record.
I'm, I'm asking that on the agenda, we will have that document as part of our packet next month and we'll ask the city clerk to come and address or talk to us about this.
I don't think that's anything different than the time when I actually did a report about a meeting that, uh, that we had, that I had and, and Jeannie was there too with, uh, city treasurer to discuss things that were involved with the endowment. And then her assistant came to the meeting just in case there was some new questions afterwards.
Exactly. Okay. All right. That's all I had for that one. We can go back to the, uh, 7B.
Okay, just a moment. Okay, so we're back to review, discussion and recommendations for trust fund. And I'll pull up your memo, trustee Kelly.
Thank you. Jeannie, does that item 7B refer back to item 7A?
No.
No, 7B is a, a memo from trustee Kelly.
Oh, I got, okay.
Is there a confusion on that, Craig?
Yeah, I, I was, um, we, now I do see on, I, I'm sorry, I, I made a mess here. I do see on 7A that there was a, uh, possibility for a motion or a second. And we could have addressed David's recommendation there.
Oh, no, but I thought she would already, uh, decided to put that on a, uh, as an agenda item for next time.
Yeah. And I wanted to do that because I didn't think we had a possibility of a motion, but now I see it on the copy that I have. Okay, I would, you guys are good.
Thank you. Okay, so, uh, the report is out. Um, hopefully everybody got to read it. It was, it was really interesting to go through this because as you can see here, I actually went through At Sunrise, the history of the Palm Springs Library. And for, uh, our new, newer members, if you don't have a copy, please get a copy. It's very informative, great reading. Um, it, I wish it would actually have gone all the way up to 2019. But, uh, we have to make do with what we've got. Um, I, I would definitely recommend to anybody who's sitting inside of the, uh, Wellwood Memorial Library and working on the City Historical Society, that they should actually be working on the update to this book, um, especially while all of us are still here. So, um, anyway, so, uh, I, the relevant stuff, you know, in, in the first paragraph, it says, "On July 5th, 1939, the Palm Springs City Council adopted Ordinance Number 60, which established a library under the California Education Code." And I go through a number of the different ordinances, um, in here and to say, you know, just to have a record of where people were and what was happening. And, um, and I thought it was interesting to note that at the end of the paragraph, it says, "According to At Sunrise, trustees immediately set upon fundraising for the building of the Wellwood Memorial, Murray Memorial Library." So the trustees actually have spent in the past historically time doing fundraising. Amazing. Um, in a memo from, uh, uh, Jeannie, uh, that was dated October 7th, uh, the affirmation of the library trust fund and the roles of the trustees, librarian and city manager are found primarily in two resolutions, 1140, uh, 1143-1 dated May 7th, 1975, and 17288 dated October 3rd, 1990, if we can move forward. Thanks. So I, I pulled out the, uh, the, really the key information that's on those resolutions. So, uh, the 11431 establishes our library trust fund. Uh, and 17288, 1990, um, that's, uh, the way I interpreted it, it says here, it's when the public library is reestablished as a full municipal department. So if you wanted to know a little bit about why, um, the library is, uh, part of the city's operating budget, that's what happened. And, and At Sunrise, there's an interesting story about how the, the president of the board got together with, uh, people in the city council to make this happen. And, um, so, uh, going forward, in, a lot of this language and stuff that you're familiar with. Um, in item A, it says, "Library trustees shall be appointed by the mayor with the consent of the city council." So all of us have been approved just in that manner. "City councils shall annually renew amendments necessary and adopt the library's operational budget." That's what they do. "City councils shall establish a number of and compensation ranges for the library paid employees. And the city council shall act upon library legislative items, resolutions, appointments, budget amendments, et cetera." So in resolution two of that same, section two of that same resolution, it, it's, you know, really talks about us. So it's, "The library board shall manage and control the library trust fund," which we do. And that is how, uh, we have been asserting our, uh, dominion over the money that's in that trust. And I would strongly suggest it going forward, should we, uh, make any decisions to move it out of the hands of the city, that we referred directly to that, that item, section 2A. "The library board shall establish and amend library policies and procedures as required." "Library board shall establish, amend and periodically review all library fines, fees and charges and ensure such charges are incorporated into the city's master fee schedule." That would be interesting to know about that, but I'm, I'm, now that we don't have library fines and fees and charges, I guess I'd rather just leave that topic alone, right? "The library board shall manage the approval of all library purchases from the library fund, subsequent to council's approval of the literary budget and the library trust fund." That would be an interesting conversation to talk about at some point, um, but I will defer that to another time. "The library board shall develop and amend long and short range library plans, which we have done, um, especially as it concerned, uh, the operations, uh, the future operations of the library and whether or not it, um, uh, it, it's expanded or moved or all those lovely topics." "Library board shall manage all library facilities." "The library board shall consult with city manager with regard to evaluation and appointment of city librarians."
Can we go, uh, David, I was waiting and you went by it really quick. So I, I'm wondering why I have questions about it and you don't.
Oh, no, no, I was about to go back to F if you wanted to go back to F.
Yeah, I want to go back to F just for a second.
Yeah, because I, I, you know, one of the things that F raises is, you know, what does manage really mean? Because, uh, you know, historically, and I wasn't there, and probably, uh, Jeannie and Ed can talk better to this than any of us. But, you know, if we are actually involved with making roof repairs or, um, uh, concerned about whether or not the entrance of the building is facing south or facing east, um, those are two distinct issues, but they all sound like it's management of library facilities. So, um, I, I don't know what the fiscal impact of that is. Um, I, I, you know, manage could be many different things. So, um, I, if we wanted to have a discussion about exerting our power over section 2F, that would be a very interesting discussion.
Yeah, I think so. Okay. There's nowhere that you saw that the word manage is defined, correct?
Um, you know, this is a resolution. Resolutions don't tend to, um, uh, say a whole lot. I, I, you know, the lawyer in me would probably say, um, I would look to other, uh, parts of the city code or charter to say what they would usually refer to in using that word manage. That's where I would get mine, but there's no little asterisk attached to that word.
Okay.
So seeing how it's not an issue about our library endowment, uh, at this point, I'm not about to, and I can't think of any other issues that we've currently, uh, facing that have to do with management of the facilities. Uh, I, I guess another example of where we've been managing the facilities is our recommendations as to things like, um, whether or not we, we would like to see the, the toilets renovated or, you know, any of those things. Um, the, the fray building maybe. But moving along, section three, resolution 1720, uh, 17288 says, "A, the city manager shall appoint and evaluate the city librarian in consultation with the library board." That hasn't, I don't know. Uh, Jeannie, you probably weren't around to hear what the library board had to say when you were appointed, but, um, and I don't think either any of us were, but, um, I'm sure if there was a, uh, another time, if you decided to, to move to somewhere, another great opportunity. I'm sure if there was another time, if you decided to, to move to somewhere, another great opportunity somewhere else. You know, I'm sure somebody at the city council would want to get some input from us, so it's interesting.
There was at least one board member on my interview panel. I can't remember who, everybody was that was there, but I do remember one person that I know of, the trustees.
Okay.
He stood in on the interview panel, and I think there were like nine people there.
Okay. The city manager shall recommend appropriate amendments to the annual library fund operational budget prior to its admission to the city council. The city manager shall apply the provisions of the city's current personnel rules to library paid employees. The manager shall assign departmental duties to the city librarian as required, subject to the consent of the library board. That's interesting. I don't know if that's ever been asserted, but it's there. E, the city manager shall communicate directions from the city council to the city librarian as necessary. And certainly we've seen a lot of all this even during COVID. I mean, a lot of, I'm sure what Jeanie has been going through in terms of opening and closing the library is coming at the direction of the city manager. So. Okay, so then I go on to say that Marcus Fuller assisted city manager in a memo to Ed referenced seventeen two eighty-eight, which we just reviewed as establishing the relationship between the city and the board of trustees. And again, he noted that section two A, the resolution gives the trustees control of the library trust fund. So, and in compliance, I'd say in compliance with resolution seven two eight eight, the city only approves expenditures from this fund with express approval of the board of trustees. So that was, I think, an answer to our concerns, especially during the beginning of the COVID crisis, when the city was looking to use its rainy day fund. And wondering, there were concerns here about whether or not the rainy day fund and our fund were co-mingled because it's all being managed by the same outside city manager or not city manager, but fund manager. So I think that his response was in, was really primarily to address that issue. Fiscal management, memo from trustee Kelly to Jeanie Kayes, reported a meeting among, yes, so Kelly Kayes and Lacy. That's where we were talking about the management of the 200 million in cash and investments that which the library trust fund is pulled into. I don't know the name of the current investment advisor, but they were making a switch at the time and it would be, the idea was that the city had a number of objectives when they were looking for this independent investment advisor, one being the needs of municipalities. And then also the, their fiscal responsibility there for safeguarding the public's funds while minimizing market risk and maximizing both liquidity and yield, which basically means that they want to keep the money safe. And they want to avoid taking undue risk. And maximize both the return and the ability for the money to be readily available. So Mr. Lacy reported the city earned 1.1 million in interest at the rate of 1.8% for the fiscal year ending six to 2019. And the library received a proportional credit. We have not met with the city treasurer at this point or city finance director to ascertain what was the rate of return for fiscal year ending six thirty, twenty twenty. And that's what I put in the request here. Discussion points, the library trust fund should have its own charter with a statement of purpose, objectives and investment guidelines. The charter should state the type of library projects it will consider funding and which needs special approval, if any. We haven't really discussed that. Oddly enough, that, that came up in the last meeting of the Friends of the Palm Springs Library. They were asking what was, what were our investment guidelines? And I could not answer that question. So perhaps at some point, if unless Jeanie can find it in one of her file cabinets, that there was a prior meeting that said that we actually had investment guidelines, maybe we should actually spend some time considering some. Independent investment advisor will want to review the charter to establish its role and responsibilities in administering the library trust fund. Yeah, so if we do go that route, probably we will, that independent investment advisor will want to know something about what are, what are our guidelines, not only just for investment purposes, but also for how we're expending, how we're spending that money. So because liquidity issue become, is more important when we're saying that we're expecting to spend, you know, $80,000 a year on, on new books. But it becomes less important when we say there's a five-year plan to renovate the library. And it won't begin until year two. If the trustees assign the investment advisor role to the trustee treasurer, would it be appropriate for the board of trustees to obtain directors and officers insurance to protect against potential liabilities? I raise that question only because for example, the foundation probably is going to initially manage its own funds until it gets to a size that it might consider inviting, paying an investment advisor. They may wish to have directors and officers insurance to protect against potential liabilities. The same could go for the friends since they manage their money that way as well, independently of any kind of outside advisor. Will we need to engage independent legal counsel to make changes in the management of the library trust fund? What may be required that the city clerk or city attorney to make changes to the management of the library trust fund? All future questions depending on what we decide to do, but not needing to be answered until we start moving towards hiring an independent investment advisor or deciding to manage the money our own. And that's it. Thanks for listening. Any questions?
I move, we accept the document?
Seconded.
Jeanie, do, can you please do a vocal?
Craig Borba?
Yes.
Melissa Cronin?
Yes.
Juanita Garner?
Yes.
David Kelly?
Yes.
Ed McBride? Ed, I didn't hear.
The items that you put for discussion points, I'm looking at, I see that as the right sequence. Do you see that? Did you intentionally put that in that sequence?
I don't know what you mean, but I guess I try to do things in a sensible order. So if that's how it ended up, then thank you.
Well, I'm, I'm thinking that discussion point one should be one of the first things we discuss on our future agendas.
I would happy to lead that discussion. Do we want to put it on for the next agenda, next meeting?
Yes, I would just like to say, first of all, thank you for compiling this. It's an incredibly informative document. I'm so glad that it's on the record for anyone who's interested to have handy. And I agree with trustee Borba and trustee Kelly that we should really tackle that first discussion point as soon as possible because I think it will shed light on some of the other questions that came up in the earlier discussion in terms of the management of facilities. And what exactly our roles are going to be. If it's not defined in the resolution, then maybe we should at least try to define it ourselves.
So we'll, we'll add this item number one to our next agenda, Jeanie.
Yes.
And we'll ask the treasurer to lead the discussion on that item.
Fine.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments on this item?
No, great document.
Jeanie, I think this is yours.
Okay, so library budget. Yeah, I apologize, your packet, I have an old, I have, there was a misprint and I didn't realize that I, I combined and collated the misprint with the updated version. So the updated version says the budget proposal will be flat or reduced, updates come at board meeting. And then I think you, if you got the bad packet, it says budget subcommittee meeting scheduled for February 1st. Is that what some of you are seeing?
That's correct.
Did not happen because there was a concern that that was a Brown Act violation. So we didn't have that, a budget subcommittee meeting. But the, the general information is that my budget is going to be probably flat or reduced. And we are, my, my first draft of the budget is due on Monday, so I've worked up estimates of what I think I will need for next year. And I just sent you that as an email. I have a couple of different ways to look at it. You can see on your screen. I have one that's just just a general history of what has been approved in the past, which I can zoom into this, this is very small. For the main library and then one for Wellwood. Wellwood has its own account. And then I have a document that I use, which gives a little more detail into the individual categories based on what we, what we anticipate that money on. So I can start either way, whenever you prefer. What would you like for me to go over?
So is it, is it, my understanding that this is what you're leaning towards proposing on Monday in your budget meeting?
Right, if, if we've reached out to our vendors, we, we have annual accounts that we pay up here, like database subscriptions and things like that. And so we reached out, we do, we reach out to them every year and say, we need, it's time, budget time, we need our, our cost proposals. So some of them get back to others and some of them, we don't hear from until right before it's due. So we do our best to estimate it, but this spreadsheet that you might be able to see on your screen is it shows the 2019 adopted budget. And again, this, like I said, this is a first draft and I can bring this back next month. It's you know, where it's part of your packet, whatever you prefer, because the budget isn't you know, usually adopted until June. So it's February now. So we've got a few months of revisions and back and forth on this one. But it shows you the 2019, 20, 2019, 2020 adopted budget. Any revisions that might have happened and then actual, actual spending that we did, what was actually spent. And then how much was saved or returned back to the general fund. The 2020 budget, we had, we had adopted a two-year budget and so we had an adopted budget of 2.6 million dollars. And then because of the economic downturn, we were our budgets were frozen and money was reversed back. And then there was a final adoption where we, my budget was cut $318,000. And then, so my final budget for the current year that we're operating in right now is 2.3. And then this column on the right that's highlighted in yellow is what I'm requesting. I'm going to submit this and it's 2.399. So we had, we're currently operating in a 2.369 budget. I'm going to request a 2.399, which is about an increase of $30,000. And I'm trying to be very conservative with the funds, not doing a lot of increases unless unless I have a good justification for it. Some of the things that I'm requesting increases to are things like databases and streaming services like Canopy, Acorn TV, adding that into this fund. We had had that paid for by the friends. I'm trying to get additional money for that so that we can pay for it out of this account. Things like that. And then my professional development, my librarians, they don't have their memberships in their, in their national organizations. And so I feel like it's very important for professional development for them to have the membership in their organization. So requesting that a little bit of an increase, but some other categories, we're decreasing things to try to compensate. The sections at the top you'll see are salaries. Those are not controlled by me. I have no control over those accounts. Those are calculated by the finance department and human resources. So I don't have a say in, in those categories. So the ones that I have more of a say in are the ones down below like books. And some of them, you know, like contractual cataloging, that's our, our cataloging records that we buy and that is our membership for interlibrary loan in WorldCat. And so I don't really have a we could not do that. We could not have cataloging records. That would be terrible. So it's an important fund to have. So something like that is important to keep going every year. I don't really have a choice in the amount that I pay. That's what I was trying to say. So some of our databases and things, they send us the price and you, you buy it or you don't get it. So we do negotiate some things. We try, you know, to negotiate as best we can on different, different things, but some of them, you know, there's no negotiating. So I don't know exactly what you, if there's something special you want to see. Let me show you Wellwood. The Wellwood Library has been closed this year. And so the budget for that account was reduced down to a half, 123,000. We really haven't spent any of that because we haven't been open. And the majority of that money is to pay the staff from the Bureau of Tourism. So I'm requesting that we reopen Wellwood or have funding for it when it's time to reopen. And it's a reduced amount, but we still need to pay for our internet and just some basic operations of reduced amount. We wouldn't be, I don't expect us to do events at Wellwood like we were, are having a lot of in-person activities. So I think we can save money there.
So Jeanie, what, what can we do to support you through this process at this particular point?
At this point, I'm okay. I've just got to turn this in to the city and then we'll see what happens. I hope that, I hope that they see the importance of some of our increase, where areas where we have increased like our, a canopy for streaming. It's so popular. I mean, it's to the point where I'm going to have to cancel it because we're out of money. If, I think we can make it through the end of the year, we're, we'll get very close. So I think I can make it this year, but it it's just so, it cuts it so close because it's so popular. And you know, our eBooks, the usage went through the roof and I would love to, you know, and thank you to you all and to the friends. We've been able to spend more money on eBooks. So that's been terrific. So there are some fluctuations in, in our behavior here. Spending more money on technology and online resources and things like that. So I just have good thoughts. You can advocate if you, if you have any communication methods, you know, feel free to, to advocate for the library and say how important the library is and, and the funding now more than ever. And, you know.
Do you got any indication about what Justin Cliffin, the new city manager is going to? Is the idea that Dr. Ready is going to have this signed, sealed and delivered? So all he has to do is kind of walk in the door and it's all done? Or since he's showing up in April before the end of the fiscal year, that he's going to get his fingers in this?
I'm really not sure. I'm not, I, I'm not sure, honestly. I, I know we are preparing, just like you, our normal timeframe, we're working on it. I think I'm really not sure. I'm not, I, I'm not sure, honestly, I, I know we aren't preparing, just like our normal timeframe, we're working on it, I think. It could go either way, I, I just don't know. Honestly, I can't say.
Yeah. I mean, because Dr. Ready's been there for what, 20 years? I mean, it's not like we have any history, I mean, we were all babies back when he was appointed, right?
Sure, I was three.
So Jeannie, do you mind, who, who are you meeting with on Monday or who are you presenting this to?
I'm, I'm not, as far as I know, I'm not doing any meetings, but I am submitting it to Marcus Fuller, the Assistant City Manager and the Finance Director. So I have to. Email this, so then I think they will take a look at it. So we have to make sure that our documents are pretty self-explanatory without having to point and talk.
All right. Any, any questions for Jeannie on this document or?
I'm very hopeful that my databases get approved and very hopeful that we can spend more money on eBooks and streaming services. We want to create a new Blu-ray collection at the library, and that's going to cost money. Which would have, it's going to have to be subtracted from the DVD collection so that. Unless anybody wants to supplement our collection and, and support a Blu-ray collection, so. That's, that's something, you know, still, our book budget is cut in half and that hurts. It's painful. Right now I have zero designated for large print. I need to find some funding for large print books, it's about ten thousand dollars a year. Last year I received a grant, so I need to either seek out that grant or.
Are large print books adult nonfiction?
Some of them, but very few. It's mostly fiction. And that's what is mostly, most popular is large print fiction.
The foundation's applying for a grant, this might be a good purpose to put, you might want to talk with David about having that be a purpose.
Yeah. Yeah, so we, you know, we've been very fortunate, we're so fortunate compared to some other libraries, you know, when it comes to funding. So lucky. Because there are some libraries that they get. Less than five thousand dollars for their whole library budget. I mean. That's, that's a book order. I could, I could spend that in a day. So it's really sad to see some libraries in our community that are getting very, very little devoted to new books.
Any other, thank you, Jeannie, for that report. Any other questions for Jeannie?
Thank you, Jeannie.
Thank you, Jeannie.
Okay, anything else at this point? We are next agenda item is trustee staff comments, future agenda items.
Just a thought, I'm just wondering on the last item, whether the trustees. It's probably too late this time, but next time that we vote in support of her recommended budget. So that they know that the trustees have reviewed it and. Are approving this.
We, we, Craig, we can certainly do that now, if you guys would like to, I mean, we can.
I'd like to support it, that's what she, that helps with your process, sure. Jeannie?
Yeah, so.
That would be fine, and I actually also thought, I thought about the, the trust fund, and we, we should talk about maybe that as a future agenda item about. How you want to. Some, you know, spend in the trust fund, and maybe that needs to be something individual that you all discuss.
I think that's already on the agenda, that's part of the item number one of those recommendations that I put at the end of my report.
I think it's coming.
Yeah.
So if everybody's in approval, I'd like to recommend that the trustees are in full support of the proposed budget submitted by the librarian to the. City manager.
I have a second.
I have a second, can we do a roll call, please?
Craig Borba?
Yes.
Melissa Cronin?
Yes.
Juanita Garner?
Yes.
David Kelly?
Yeah.
Ed McBride?
Yes.
Thank you, that's nice.
Godspeed.
Ask for more.
And do say no, right?
Yeah.
Okay, any other agenda items for the future or any other comments? Okay. Then we will adjourn this meeting at seven twenty-eight. And thank you all for joining us tonight.
Stay safe, wear a mask, Happy Valentine's Day. Go cheese.